It's 10:00 AM, all right. Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on December 10th, 2019, and I hereby call the meeting of Story County Board of Supervisors to order and would ask if you would like to join us. Please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we have adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes anybody wants to present or ask for? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to adopt today's agenda. So moved. Second? Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Agenda is adopted. I would just mention, for everybody's benefit, that we do have a somewhat longer agenda than we've had recently today. I think there's several discussion items. Also, we will need to be down around 12:45 because we have a meeting with the county's library directors at 1 o'clock here in Nevada, but just over at the library. So, anyway. Then I will open public comment session number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So if there's any members of the public who would like to address any topic on the agenda, this would be the time to do that and move to the microphone. And seeing nobody move to the microphone, I will close public comment period number one, and we will go on to a discussion regarding potential funding assistance for the housing study and needs assessment. Mason Adams from Alliant Energy is with us, and LeAnn Harder is going to introduce this topic.
And I'll introduce Mason.
Oh, that'll be fine. Okay.
I'll provide them a little bit of board, so I'll be back there if you can come back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Mason Adams, key account manager for Alliant Energy, and I'll try to keep the comments brief, as you mentioned, you've got quite a lengthy agenda. So I had a chance to visit with LeAnn just briefly before the Thanksgiving holiday to get a better sense of what the housing study and the needs assessment report was entailed, kind of what the process was and exactly what Story County was looking to accomplish, and have a timeline associated with that, but also to explain Alliant Energy's interest in potential eligibility for some funding. And I think that'll be kind of the crux of our discussion today, is for you to understand kind of what our intent or motivation is. So let me be very clear that it is not Alliant's intent to provide any solicit anything from this study to provide to influence the results of the study or have any sort of influence on decision-making, what happens after the study is completed. Really, where Alliant comes into this is, you know, we've got a longstanding history of offering support to our communities, the communities that we serve, electricity, natural gas. You've seen us out and about delivering hometown safety grant checks to Story County Sheriff's Department, Nevada Fire Department, Ames Fire Department, and so on and so on. On top of that, we're, through our Alliant Energy Foundation, delivering, you know, grant checks in, you know, various amounts to raising readers of Story County, the fellows elementary to assist with some funding for their STEM program, and so on and so forth. And this is kind of another leg of our stool of how we can find opportunities to help meet the funding gap with stewarding our shareholder dollars appropriately. For many years, we've worked with our local economic development organizations with what we've called a partnership program. So we might help them, you know, with a little bit of monetary assistance to get a certification down at the Heartland Economic Development Conference in Oklahoma annually. We might help with a new marketing program that an EDO is looking to push out, a new website, labor shed study, which, you know, as you know, are now done financed out at the state level, workforce studies, those kind of things to help our programming needs, you know, with our local EDOs. We've shifted that focus based on, you know, business retention expansion visits that we participated in with our various, you know, key stakeholders and businesses to understand what, you know, what the gaps are with some of the needs in the communities to either help them stay in business, expand, or attract new business, and just, you know, general conversations with people like yourself and community members, city council, local governments, et cetera. So we're restructuring our partnership program to focus on a few key areas. A lot of detail's still yet to be fully baked out on this, but, you know, looking at those areas of housing, workforce, you know, quality of place, and site certification. Those are all things that are just kind of part of economic development and having, you know, strong thriving communities. So that's where we're coming from, is here's something, here's a great opportunity with a housing needs and assessment study that's going to impact, you know, all of the rural communities that we proudly serve, electric, natural gas combo, and this could be a good fit for this new kind of strategic push to identify some areas where, you know, we could throw a little bit of money at and to help offset some of the funding. So I'll open it up for a question.
So I guess the one question, I'm sorry, may I go?
Go ahead.
The one question I would have is then is there an application process the board would need to go through, or?
Great questions. Previously, there was. It was kind of a little bit of an onerous process to walk through. We've really streamlined that, and essentially, you've gone through the application process by putting the, you know, the RFP out to bid for the housing needs assessment. We'll look that over, but essentially, once the study is completed, we'll take a review through that. I'm sure that would be public information, and then we would look at what our funding level is going to be. So there is no official application process, is what I'm saying.
So are, from your comments, so I'm clear, you would look at potentially funding after the assessment, or just after looking at the RFP?
After looking at the study. After looking at the study is what we would look at.
So it'd be almost more of a reimbursement afterwards?
Correct. Yes.
Got it. Okay.
So, and I'm going to follow up on Lisa's question on that, because a couple of our programs that where we give tax dollars out to, like, the small communities, a couple of those, the work can't have started yet. So just want to clarify that this is a reimbursement after the fact, even when you look at it, so that just we're timing that correctly.
Yeah, yeah. We're just ensuring that the study is completed, which we would make the same request for, you know, whether it was a workforce study that was, that needed to be done, or, you know, when labor shed studies that we were helping finance, we would make sure that the study or strategic planning study was done. We'd make sure that study was actually completed before we would provide any funding.
So you're talking about possibly helping us out with the funding of the study?
Correct. The study cost.
Okay. That helps me, because I was looking at the things that you did not fund. I was thinking, you don't fund capital, you don't fund, you know, remodeling, whatever. I was trying to figure out where we were.
Yes, the study cost. Yes.
So you're saying after you see the study, you will look at possibly helping us out with payment.
That is correct.
Excellent. What other kind of things do you think that you might be able to do in terms of the housing arena?
Can you add a little more context to?
Is your website up to date on the part that says the things that we do fund, the things that we don't fund?
Yes, that is correct. And what you're going to see there is more focused on the Alliant Energy Foundation, those community grants, corporate sponsorships, the hometown safety grants that I mentioned earlier on what we do and don't fund. As I had mentioned, just kind of, and briefly there, our new partnership program, so to speak. We still have a lot of details yet to finalize on what, you know, what we're going to put out on the website for kind of public facing, but just, you know, this is kind of, this is maybe one of the first of its kind for our new strategic vision on workforce, housing, quality of life. You know, this particular study here at Story County may be the first of its kind that we provide funding to, and you guys will be, Story County would be at the top of the list, so.
So I just have kind of a process question. I don't know if it's for you, or you two, or maybe if it's for Lisa Markley, who's not here right now, but if we provide funding for the housing study, then you pay back the county? I'm just trying to.
Yeah, it just goes back into the general fund. It's a donation to the general fund.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I said this before, Mason, and you heard this, but I want to say this again, that never in my memory of having been reporting on the board or being on it, and Shelley seemed to be of the same mind, and she's been clerk for a very long time, have we ever had someone come and offer us money? Lots of people want money, but we've never had anybody come offer us money before, so I think that's wonderful. I thank you for that. And my only questions, you answered a lot upfront about not wanting anything. I'm assuming there will be a photo when that big check, that fake check is turned over before it goes.
If they.
If it's turned over, okay. Where it then flows through our internal system. But you're not asking for your name to be on it. You're not asking for any kind of input into evaluating the information or changing it or anything. You really are saying we're shifting our emphasis on partnerships, and we feel this is a partnership.
Absolutely. Hundred percent.
So, and then my only other question was, is I went through what you're currently doing, they're all communities that you serve, and because this is a Story County-wide survey and study, there are some other rural electric cooperatives that serve just tiny bits of the rural areas. Do you feel that Alliant would have a problem with that?
None whatsoever.
Okay.
You know, when we're delivering a check for X amount to, you know, an elementary, there could be an open enrolled, you know, family from, you know, from one of those communities we don't serve, the Nevada Fire Department, whatever, you know, they're going out to serve the community wherever it is. It could be a non-Alliant Energy customer. That makes no difference.
I looked over the list, and I only saw one community that wasn't included in communities they serve.
Okay.
There's a link for them on their website, so.
So can you just tell me, then, the process of who is the, if we move forward with this, you know, we go through the study, get that information back, do we contact you, or whom do we contact?
Yes. Yep, I'm your primary contact. I work directly with our senior community and economic development managers in Cedar Rapids, and we would review it and determine what that level of funding is.
Gotcha. Okay.
And I also, I was a little worried about timeframe with you developing this new relation, these new relationships and determining that. I was a little worried, because I didn't want the study held up. So hearing that it's a reimbursement situation makes me feel good, just that we can go ahead and move forward. You know, I'd have preferred it was done yesterday.
Sure.
And then go ahead, so.
Yeah, we'll be on your timeframe, on your schedule.
So thank you. For me, thank you for your proactiveness, for paying attention to what's going on over here and knowing what was going on at your company and saying, maybe the two of us can work together. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this morning.
And you still have emphasis on environmental?
Yes.
Issues also?
Mm-hmm.
Our Conservation Department Director is here, and the Director of Prairie Rivers of Iowa, so I'm just going to say they might want to look at some of your materials as well.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mason. Okay, then, we have no agency reports today. Next is consideration of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, the December 3 regular meeting and the December 15 runoff canvas minutes. Would entertain a motion?
I make the motion to approve the December 3, 2019 minutes and the December 5, 2019 runoff canvas minutes.
I second. Okay. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Minutes are adopted. No personnel actions, so we'll go to claims. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims at, oh, sorry. Yeah, to approve the claims as listed. Sorry.
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Now we'll go on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want any items pulled?
Yes, I'd like to pull item five, no, sorry, not item five. I'd like to pull, sorry about that, Ted, scared you for a minute there. Okay. I'd like to pull item 12, consideration of activation decision trees to be incorporated in the COOP CAG, so then I would make a motion to, for discussion. So I would make a motion to approve all of the other consent items as presented.
With the exception of item 12.
Item 12.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Let me discuss item 12 now.
I just want to make note that I had one correction. I've already spoken to LeAnn Harder about it, so she may have already made it. It's at the very, very end of the flow chart, and it says then, decide to activate the CCMT, which is the COOP CAG management team, and actually, it should, I think it should say, and LeAnn agreed, supervisors and CCMT, because if the supervisors are available, we actually will take care of that, and then the CCMT team would be activated by us instead. So it's just a real technical thing, but since it is a flow chart, that's where you want to follow through.
Okay. LeAnn, did you have any comments?
No.
Nope? Sorry? Okay. Okay. And entertain a motion?
I would so move that we approve the, via the consent agenda, once again, the activation decision trees. As a business.
With the addition of supervisors at the final step. Correct?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thank you, LeAnn, for working on that. One more. That's good. Okay. We will then go to public hearing items. We have none. Additional items? Discussion and consideration of the 2020 communications plan. LeAnn?
Just realized, I think I might have too much on today's agenda.
You kept us very busy. You'll get through it.
Just trying to get caught up there. Normally, what the matter that is before the board today, you see towards the end of the month or in January, but given some scheduling conflicts began 2020, I'm bringing it forward to the board today. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it. I did provide a memo that went over in detail some of the changes that are noted in the draft communications plan. I do have one additional item to add. Mike Cox, Jerry Moore, and I met last week regarding outreach for the watershed assessment working group. Something that we've been doing with the community rating system program dating back to 2014 is a program for public information, a PPI. We are actually due to update that in 2019. It's an opportunity for us to build in the stormwater management and the watershed messages that we hope to accomplish with our watershed assessments into that floodplain outreach tool. So recommending we add the update to PPI, Program for Public Information. It's a requirement, something we have to do anyway for the community rating system. That would be done probably starting once I return in February. We'll get that been going. Actually, I might have the appointment of the task force to the board on your consent agenda next week.
So what specifically would you be adding?
Update to Program for Public Information, PPI.
Okay.
And I really hope I have the acronym correct. I think it's Program for Public Information. And I would just.
Where is it, LeAnn?
That would go under.
On her memo, it's the last comment she has on her memo.
Okay.
Under Outreach Campaigns for Flood Awareness Month and National Preparedness Month. Is that?
No.
No? Not there?
It's not necessarily that. It's an entire outreach plan just for different messages that we have to get out for floodplain, but it would go under that strategy.
Okay. Okay.
It could go under several strategies, but I'd say probably put it there, under Enhanced Emergency Response Communication. And that's the only addition I have.
So we're being asked to adopt the communications plan with the added update program for public information. Entertain a motion?
I'd so move.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Just like to thank LeAnn once again for this. As I scroll through what was added, most of it was mine, I guess, most of them were my comments, and so thanks for being willing to take on a couple of, at least look at for us, a couple of programs that used to exist that we kind of have done away with. I know it brings you a little bit more work on your outreach side, but given that we have a completely new board compared to where when these programs were used before, it might be worth at least us, you know, taking a look at this reach out a little bit more so that members of the public are able to meet the board and get to know and get to feel and have feedback for us, other than one-on-one, et cetera. So thank you for that. That's it.
Okay. And any other comments? Let's see. Laura, so it was your motion?
Yes.
So, Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thank you. And I would agree that you've done a lot of good work on this plan.
Yes, you have.
Now we're moving on to the C2C implementation matrix.
What's before you is something you've seen a couple times. I did take the comments I've received over the past few months and folded this into the implementation matrix. What you don't see is the watershed assessment implementation matrix. That's a component of this. The group will be looking at that again, hopefully, early next year, so at that point, we'll probably come back and amend this back, and amend it back in. I just didn't want, for the purposes of the agenda, didn't want to make it too big, more so than I already had. So the proposed changes, either if it's something to be added, it's in red font and underlined, or just red font, and then several strategies proposed to be removed. Those have already been achieved, and I know we had some discussion leaving them in. We can just say completed rather than outright striking them and removing, but I just wanted to note for today that those, we've achieved those. So I'll go with the board's preference on that. If you want, leave them in and write achieved over it, or something like that. Following today, we'll get it printed online again and get distributed, and then this will help form board program items for a couple departments as well. Are there any questions?
Specifically to your question, I was thinking about that, that we, unless we have another document that shows things that have been done, we might lose track of those things. So my personal preference would be to say achieved, and maybe even the year in which it was achieved. Is that doable?
I hope so.
Then it's achieved.
I hope I can determine the year.
If you can, I think it'd be nice, and if it involves huge lengthy research, never mind, but if it's readily available.
But I would agree, it would be nice to have the achieved on there. It does just help us. I just kind of see it as kind of that checkoff list of, okay, we've got this done, there are other areas we need to look at, and then just helps us future down the road if there's something we need to relook, even if it was something that was achieved. We can make some determinations if there needs to be any updates or anything with that, so.
Sometimes somebody could not realize we'd done something maybe and say, oh, I have this great idea. Say, somebody say, well, we did it five years ago.
Yep. Past iterations, the strategic plan, we just had a blue checkmark, and it was a visual reminder that we looked at it, we did whatever we needed to do to get it done, or for some reason said we did as far we could go, we went as far as we could with that item.
I agree, and with a date sometimes is good, if you can find them, but I understand some will have to go back a far. No expectations about this being done right of way. Okay? So I do have one, and I apologize, I didn't send it to you last week, but it only came to me yesterday, so late in the day, so as far as this. And this, and this would be, I believe, under foundation, which is three, and be page six. And we discuss housing under H3. Housing is planned for design and built in a way that it responds to residents' needs and reflects their voices and experiences. And what I was thinking of yesterday, last night, actually, is that we have had some communication, some feedback on mobile home parks, and one in particular, but we did deal with Cresview two years ago, and over the last decade between Ames, really in Ames specifically, but then Story County has some mobile home parks in our unincorporated areas, that we've lost a lot of housing, mobile home housing. And while it's not something that stays on everybody's agenda from the standpoint of low-income housing, it is an important part. Now, we, I'm not suggesting we go ahead and rip apart our ordinance by any way, okay? But I would like to maybe see if we can evaluate the mobile home park ordinances to determine what might be possible, maybe with the width or the number of, amount of green space between the homes or whatever, when it comes to making mobile housing affordable or accommodating, or maybe even to encourage the development of a new home in the unincorporated areas in the years to come. So I bring it up now because this is where we kind of look at the strategies involved, but it also could be something we just would go ahead and assign to planning and development. I mean, you know, and this is more of an overview plan, but ask them to look at it and maybe add it later. But I am, as I think more and more about this, and I think about how are we offering housing for all income points, we seem to be decreasing the amount of housing in mobile homes.
We just approved the work plan, our joint meeting last.
We approved the first draft of it, I thought. I'm sorry, I thought it was coming back to us to take another look at. I mean, we pretty much gave our feedback, but we got pretty pushed at the end there. So.
It'll probably, you know.
I mean.
The jury's not here.
I know, I saw you just walked out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we could talk with Jerry about that, see if, I guess they got a pretty, as we said last week, it's a pretty ambitious work plan already.
Right. Right. And we know we've had some legal, you know, contact and concerns, so I'm not, I'm more feeding into the general situation about we're losing mobile home spaces and what can we do to encourage to get some more. I'm not talking about any non-conforming or ones that are not meeting the ordinances right now. I'm not talking about dealing with anything from the past.
I would think, I mean, I just look at the title here for the housing, that it responds to the needs and reflects their voices and experiences. I just feel like that's pretty broad.
Okay.
And that would be my opinion, because that would look at all type of housing.
Okay.
Whether it be mobile home or, you know, other built. My preference would be to leave as is here, but certainly, we could talk with planning and development, because it is, we have more and more folks. We've had situations with various ones, but we also know that they are utilized, they're another housing option, and, you know, you get the very few. You don't want that to kind of mar the great ones, you know, the ones that are working well. So for me, I would think that we could kind of work with planning and development on that. That's just my opinion. LeAnn, did you have something?
Yeah. In about a year or so, hopefully, we'll be reviewing the housing needs assessment. I think logically that will necessitate some changes to the C2C plan, and that will bring forward our annual review at the same time. Someone will manage that, and that will then trigger review of this, too, and there may be some strategies that come out of that study as we're asking for recommendations. We do address mobile homes, manufactured homes within the study as an area, so I think perhaps delaying it until that study is done, but keeping that in the back of the mind that would fit nicely after that.
I was wondering if it would come out in the study, and that might, yeah, that might give us some good direction.
Insert mobile home, too. Okay. I'm good, just wanted to bring it up, so.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my only comment.
So we're still, okay. Anything else on the implementation matrix, then?
I'll just note, once I get it cleaned up a little bit later, pages, page numbers will look a little wonky, because the table goes off the page. That's just the draft, so rest assured, the cleanup will be a little bit neater than it is right now. And it will be done before I leave, so that it's on the timeframe.
Okay. Excellent. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the final implementation matrix?
So moved. Second?
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Thank you again. Now, let's see. We have Ethan Anderson on the agenda.
Take it away, Lisa.
Yeah, Ethan's not here. This is the, this was the member, there had been a, you know, an agreement, our proposal from the county to help fund, towards funding for Healthie Life Center that did not occur. Having spoke with Ethan Anderson, our attorney, he had consulted with the city of Ames and decided that they're both going to do a memorandum of understanding to terminate a previous memorandum of understanding. So, that's what we brought forth today, is just that termination.
Okay. Any questions?
None, just thank you for thinking of that, Lisa. It wasn't on my radar, and when you caught that, that geez, what if a year and a half from now they do something else, and all of a sudden they ask us for the money? So, thank you.
So, with that, I would move consideration of Resolution 2046.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion to second to approve Resolution 20-46. Any further discussion? If not, Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Okay. Resolution's adopted. Next, we have discussion and consideration of appointment to the asset board, Nancy Brooks, for a three-year term effective April 1, 2020. Nancy has served on the asset board, as well as other boards before, has a lot of community involvement, and we needed one more person there. We contacted her, she was delighted to be asked and said she would love to come and help the asset board again. So, we are nominating her, or we replaced her name here. Any questions from anybody? Not then. I'd entertain a motion to appoint Nancy Brooks for three-year term to the asset board.
I would so move.
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. So, I think we have all of our appointments done.
I think so, I think that's great. I mean, we're ahead of, in my opinion, we're ahead of time to have that.
Good job.
Been working on it. Okay. And we have, and I didn't, I was going to try to count it up, and I can't tell you, but we have dozens, dozens of volunteers on boards and commissions in this county, and we couldn't get our work done without them, so, want to recognize that. Next, we have discussion and consideration of economic development programming and funding, and Loris is going to lead us through this. And Loris, I'm going to ask you, just for everybody's sake, before you start, just to maybe talk about why we're doing this and what your, what's your goal, what you think we should try to accomplish here? Because it's not a budget discussion, because we're not in budget work sessions yet, so maybe we need to say exactly what is it today that we want to be looking at.
Sounds good. And, um, let's see, which one of these do I put down here?
This one, sure.
This is one. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, the next trip will be with the Secretary of State.
In the past calendar year, there have been some different opportunities presented to the county, or within the application requests on some of our existing programs. There have been new twists or new thought patterns related to what some people have asked of us. And I think that what goes on out there in our smaller communities, and, well, actually all the communities, is they get used to how one board would approach economic development, and what types of things would be acceptable, and what items would not be considered economic development. And in general, economic development, I think throughout the nation, has become a more fluid, a more fluid process, and the types of items that would be considered economic development have continued to expand. Quality of life was not an economic development consideration when they started creating, back in the 50s, the, like, the tax incremental financing and urban renewal areas program. In fact, that was for really truly blighted areas. And then look at how it has expanded. So, given that we will be going into the budget discussions, and we have to decide what are we going to do, how much economic money are we going to allocate, which is not the discussion today. The discussion today is what types of projects that we've been presented with that didn't seem to fit the mold we have? What would those, would that be something that we would be likely to support in the future? And do we want to modify any of our documents so that the people out there with the city councils, the economic development groups, would have a clear understanding as they do their planning, moving into 2020 and maybe, you know, fiscal year 21, about what it's likely that we would consider favorably, and what doesn't seem to fit this board's definition at this time? This is not, like always, locking out any particular special project, right? There's always opportunities, there's always things that come up that you can't anticipate. But this is the discussion for us to have, I, I believe, just to go ahead and send that message out for everybody and for us to get a better handle on what we're most likely to think about when we go into actual discussion on funding. So, I have turned this on, and I, well, and Leann's coming up. Thank you, Leann. Leann agreed to be my, to, if I couldn't get the pointer to work, so thank you. Appreciate that. So. So, all of the information that I have in here is available if you go onto the storycountyiowa.gov website, economic development. They're either directly, it's printed from the website, or it says attachments accessible via links on the website. And that is, of course, Leann is our point person there for the keeping of the information, et cetera. So, thank you for that. I'm good? Okay. So, the current three-to-five-year goals, which were actually set back in about 11, 2011, 2012, correct, Leann? Was that, when, that was when the policy was first developed?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, these are still what is in force. The goals seem to be job creation, job retention, assistance to the economic development activities in our county, in our communities, economic stability and expansion of the tax base. So, for 2020 and beyond, first question is, do we want to add, delete, edit, or any of what was on that previous slide there? Or are we good with still saying, these are our, these are our goals, when we're looking at economic development requests and projects? Since I'm, let me know when you're ready to go on. I, I have nothing to add here, I, I'm comfortable with these.
Yeah, I would, I would, economic stability seems pretty vague to me.
Okay.
I don't know how you measure that. You can measure, I mean, you can make the, the case that because we did this certain thing, invested this money, we created economic stability. It's not a big deal, but I just, it doesn't, doesn't mean a lot to me somehow.
I agree with you. The weakest, and as we take a look at some of the projects that have been funded, we get into, yeah, how do you argue that this is an economic stability? The other way possibly to look at it is be, if we would be presented with a project that the goal was trying to stop a business or industry from leaving the community. And, and why I think of that, and think of it that way, is that Huxley did face, and now has, it has been confirmed, Huxley is losing Craig Tool. So, a couple years, maybe 18 months ago, before this board formed, I know that there was discussion about what can we do to help, what can we, the county, do to help keep Huxley? And so, Huxley, there are a couple roads that could have been paved, et cetera. Now, we're paving one right now. We'll be doing this summer, we're splitting with the city of Huxley, paving a 560th out there in their business park area. That was not related to the Craig Tool concern. But there was, there is a road that comes up from Ankeny, a gravel that you hook for a while. There was a discussion about that, kind of, that was had informally and among some supervisors who went out to economic development-related groups, and they were getting feedback individually. It never did come to the board. So, but, so that might be the economic stability.
Yeah. It's really job retention.
Yeah.
There may be some economic stability that goes past job retention, but I just think of job retention. I think it's.
Okay. I mean, you kind of look at economic stability as you not having huge, in my opinion, not huge fluctuations of, you know, you're seeing some growth or it's maintaining itself, but you're not seeing, you know, huge drops in job creation of businesses. To me, that's what's, you're being, you're being stable in that. So, there's probably some way that you can kind of measure, but to what degree? I don't know what we've currently done in measuring that.
We have done nothing. I look back at Dustin Ingram in the back, who is our contract person for, from the Ames Economic Development Corporation, and you guys do measure that, you keep pretty close hold on what's going on. I wonder, then it comes back to what could we do in this category from an economic development funding standpoint on the county's part to, to create economic stability? Is that quality of life? Because you notice quality of life is not up here.
No, but, I mean, I think if you, if there is some stable growth in a community, or not, you know, a huge fluctuation of decline, in my opinion, that is a quality of life, opponent of quality of life, because you don't have that, you're not living in kind of that constant fear of what's going on in my local community, there's things that are available or involved. Dustin, you are kind of monitoring some of that stability at this particular point, is that correct?
That's correct. And I'll just add that, what I think of stability, I think of metrics of instability, right? What does that look like? And, and some of the figures that, that you can look at include the number of firms in a town that's declining or increasing, obviously, population, unemployment, poverty rate, taxable valuation, which is something we monitor very closely, and then household data just in general from the Census Bureau. So, any of those metrics, if you're seeing gigantic fluctuations, either direction or convention, sometimes the growth can be too much for a town to, to respond, right? And that could put a burden on even their debt capacities, they're trying just to find those infrastructure projects to keep up. But in terms of stability, that, that's what I would look at, or those types of things. Does that make sense? Is that fair?
Okay. So, maybe it's just something, kind of what you, what you said, you know, those are kind of those subsets that we'd want to kind of be looking at under economic stability, just so that we're all consistent and know what, because we all, we all, just the three of us had a little bit differing as what we thought of as economic stability.
Right.
If we had just a little bit of clarification or knowledge to know that, that's, those are the, the points that we are looking at.
Yeah. And for the rural communities in particular that have faced, say, for instance, disinvestment, that, that's a number that you can find. You, you can tell whether or not taxable valuation is going down in the community. You can tell if you're losing firms, or if you're losing buildings. Those kinds of things are measurable. And collective forensics.
Okay. Thank you. The, the other thing now that we started on is that it pops to mind to me about economic stability, has to do maybe with, is there public transportation, or are there issues related to the population itself being able to maintain its life in a small community? And then I think of Huxley and the Fairway Grocery Store, and what a difference that has made. We had no money invested in that whatsoever, or whatever, but, but Collins did, they have a new little grocery store again, Collins does, so, I guess that, too. So, Lisa, I'm kind of hearing what you're saying is for, maybe we should come up with some subsets or some thoughts for economic stability. Okay?
Yeah. So, if I could, the economic prosperity chapter of the adopted cornerstone, capstone plan does sets, further set some goals, and through the, the annual review of that, we capture the demographic information as it's available, and then update that accordingly. So, we are, in, in some ways, when we're doing the annual review, measuring these, too. And then, not to sound like a broken record, but the housing study will be folded in.
Right.
All that type of information. Then with the release of 2020 census, a lot of that, that information will be updated.
Okay.
So, there are, there are goals that are adopted as part of the C2C plan as well, that do address economic stability.
Then I think is really tying that data that we're pulling out of that to the programs that we fund. And I would say, some of them are rather small. Well, you know, particularly the facade grant program, those are very small numbers. So, I don't think you can say, oh, that $2,000 there didn't make a huge turnaround of all these demographic, well, it's not going to necessarily, but at least I think we should have some initial attempts, more attempts to do that, to tie, you know, it's basically a budgeting for results kind of thing, or a funding for results, and to tie that and say, how, how are we doing? Are we just, you know, are we giving money out, and that's a good thing because it's being used, or are we, what are we getting? How is it, you know, are we targeting the right things?
Outcome-based.
Yes, very much outcome-based, is what I'd like to see. And that's, yeah, so, that jumps ahead, but I think when we're talking about, yes, we do have measurements, then we need to say, what are we doing with them? Okay?
Okay. We're good. Moving on to the next category. Dustin, if you'd like to stay there, and Leann, it works out, that, because she's able to provide good input, too. So, let's just go with that, then. Okay. So, the facade grant program. It's limited to communities, population 2,000 or less right now. The budgeted amount is $10,000 per year, we've kind of put that in year after year, but it's always been kind of more unbudgeted as needed. And this board did, in fact, with the gross win facade, we went over a little bit, you know, we allocated from, from our general fund another, I believe, $1,100, so. Next slide? Okay. Thanks.
I do have a question on the facade grants. Allowable awards, and this is in another attachment. The county will award a one-time reimbursement grant up to 20% or not more than $10,000 towards the total project cost. And then it says later, that, what did it say later, something about 25? I don't understand the 20%, and I wonder if that's something that should be cleared up. That was confusing to me.
Leann?
So, this would be if we had those higher ticket requests, and I'm not going to be able to do the math this morning, I apologize, but.
Okay.
If a community needs that final piece of the puzzle, to be able to bring that forward, and it is 20% of the total project costs.
So, the $10,000 is, or, or absolutely not more than $10,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
And I don't know, that's kind of what I thought, but it didn't quite say.
A project, $50,000.
Okay.
But it would be limited to $10,000.
What we would give.
Okay.
Leann, was there not a point where they were all due at one time?
Right.
And, but that problem is, well, go ahead.
Yeah, that, when the facade grant was first put in, first adopted and implemented, it was a set deadline each year. First year, I think we had one application from Collins that was not even, it didn't meet the requirements. And then the second year, I don't think we had any applications. And then the third year, I think we did away with the deadline. So, it's just an open-ended, as funds are available, or as the board's willing to hear requests.
Or as opportunities exist in the community. And that, I think that was the other thing about why there were investigations. Okay.
I, I have one other technical thing about this. In the, in the facade, facade grant document, it talks about application deadline, and then it says, work is expected to be completed and bill submitted within 12 months of the grand award date. However, the next page, which is the application form, or, oh, no, the terms of agreement, does not have the 12 months in there. And I'm wondering, next time you would revise that, if you could just make a note to get the 12 months in the terms of agreement.
It, it is in the, the award letter that goes out.
It's in the letter?
Yeah. You don't, that's not part of this, but I think it's logical to add it to the terms of agreement as well.
Yeah, because that's, that's what the, that's what the grantee signs. So, that, I think it'd be good to have that in there, because I think that has been an issue sometimes, to get, you know, make sure that everybody gets their bills in in time. So, and that's technical, not, you know, change, a big change, but I saw it, so I thought I'd comment on it.
So, we've had a couple of requests from the communities that are over 2,000. Previous year, it was actually two years ago, I guess, Story City Main Street Building was significantly dated, worn exterior features. It was the current owner conducting the current business who had asked about it. In this particular request, they did wait till the, near the end of the year. Leann, you talked to them at that time, so, what, had, they'd asked, right, about, hey, it's the end of the year, can we give it a try? Is that kind of what it happened?
I think they, they reached, I don't remember which member of the board they initially reached out to whom they originally reached out, but they did make its way to me, and there was still funding available left that fiscal year, so they did go forward and submit a request that ultimately was approved, but they did withdraw that application. a request that ultimately was approved, but they did withdraw that application.
And then this year, we had a Huxley highway-sided building with exterior in good condition, but the owner desired some cosmetic upgrades. They were changing use from a hair salon to offices. And as you remember that, they came and asked, and we decided not to do that. But I do bring it back for asking, do we want to take a look at expanding the program to our communities? We've got a, the next tier of communities, I guess if you would, would be Story City and Huxley when it comes to kind of population. Then we jump up again in Nevada with, what, over 6,000, 6,500, and then of course Ames. And Ames has their own facade grant program. But do we want to take a look at, at adding in, say, Huxley and Story City to this, given these were the two communities that came? They're, you know, they're above the 2,000, but they're not at quite the economic hub as, as Nevada with a real Main Street and, and Ames.
Leanne, what's the history on the population under 2,000? Why was it made, why was it set that way?
When we set the program, that was the most recent census data we had available.
Okay, but why, say, the cutoff was there? Was the rationale for having the cutoff?
I think it probably goes back to the CPAT, which is Community Planning Assistance Team Report. That was the, the census figures they use for a lot of the information and recommendations and policies and programs. So we just, that was illogical for the programs for Ames Economic Development and the CPAT, or the facade grant and technical assistance. Once we get new, we'll look at 20 revising figures.
Lisa moving up.
Right.
Would you like to?
I just want to make one comment. This is, this comes out of the 40% local option sales tax dollars in the rural fund. And I think that part of, that might have been part of the thought process at that point in time when they, when they decided on the 2,000 and less is because the primarily unincorporated area. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For now.
And I miss, I thought you meant the, the census figure, not the 2,000 persons.
Yeah, I was, why was the cutoff 2,000?
Yeah, no, but use, why we use the 2,010 census figure.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were, that's what I thought you were asking.
No, no.
Yeah.
But the 2,000 population.
Yeah. It was a logical break, like Lisa said, with the funding, funding stream, but also a lot of the, Huxley, the Story City and Nevada did have more opportunities with staff members to provide assistance.
Because they had city administrators?
And/or planners or our Main Street community. Well, one was a Main Street community at that point, now two are. Huxley had a planner. I don't know if they do anymore.
They have a public works person and a city administrator.
Nevada has a planner.
They have a public works person, city administrator. They have a pretty sizable staff. I, I don't believe they have a city planning staff. Like, we won't know that.
They did, they did, yeah.
So the goal at the time was to look at the smaller communities who really didn't have, I mean, the staff are probably a city clerk. So they just didn't have the resources.
Resources for staff and then funding too. That this might be the additional piece to get them over, get that improvement.
Okay. So next slide, I think is the, yeah, additions, solutions, ahead. So I appreciate Lisa Barkley coming up with the budgeting impact of any changes we choose to make because you just gave it. It's about, we would have to, if we chose to expand that or develop some similar programs of economic development for Huxley and Story City or anybody above, that it's not going to probably come out of the local option. It's not as justifiable?
I, that's a board decision, but I'm just saying that it primarily intend, it's primarily intended to, you're primarily intended to benefit the rural area.
Right. Okay.
In the, in the lost one.
Thank you. So is there any desire to create a similar facade program or, you know, keep this facade program expanded upwards, knowing that we might be looking at pulling the money from maybe the general fund for the, the larger cities?
We're going to go into budget work session.
Right.
Very soon, and I've been indication there's going to be considerable asks for things that would be funded out of the general fund, just because that, I feel like we are not in a good position right now to say, yes, let's put another.
Right.
Expectation onto the general fund.
And we, you know, this is a discussion more than a consideration, you know, today and stuff. But I just wanted to make everybody aware. Okay, thanks.
Lisa?
No, I would, I would agree. I wouldn't want something at this particular point to kind of overshadow the, the smaller unincorporated.
Right.
Areas. But certainly recognize, especially when Huxley came before us and their concerns or their comments of they didn't have an opportunity because they're above the threshold.
Right.
So I certainly recognize that. But I also don't, I, at this particular time in our discussions, I would just want to make sure that we are not limiting those smaller communities.
So we're not looking at for anything as we head into the budget discussion while they make the change. Okay.
And as we look at some other funds, there are funds that all, economic development funds that all the communities get, receive regardless, which is what you're going to be going to next.
I think so, yeah. So then there's the Story County Economic Development Group. And the total funding that we gave last year and unless we at the table decide to change this year would be 110,000. I believe my numbers are right. Project funding is 16.5 and per capita funding that was split among the, the other ones are 93.5. I believe they're right. Okay, I, so anyway, so where that money comes from, or the philosophy behind that, I guess, Leanne, is, is that not more related to this is your money to spend as you want for economic development?
The per capita, if they meet the requirements that are set forth in the bylaws, which does include attendance, minimum number of meetings, having different plans and programs in place, then they are able to use that for programming within their own community. Lisa, I think I have this right, is lost funding as well for this $110,000. Thank you.
So then let's, if we could go to the next slide, because project funding, oh well, I just listed, you can go ahead, unless anybody wants to stop and spend a whole lot of time on, I just listed all of the different reasons that they can get that, that is considered economic development. And then if we could go one more?
And I do want to know, at the January meeting of the Story County Economic Development Group, the issue between the, the irregularities between the bylaws and guidelines will be corrected.
Okay.
And so those will be.
Thank you.
Set.
And of course, you remember the November meeting also, we started asking that we get those forms forwarded to us about how they do spend their per capita money even. So, but now here are the projects, just taking a look at what was funded. We had five for 2017 and 2018 grants. There were five that fit into the welcome signage, whatever category. Two were wellness center or exterior restoration of buildings on Main Street, and one was for promotion of housing opportunities. In 2018, three grants were given for signage, or I put, or a community bulletin board, because that was the Kelly, the, the, right by the phone booth, right, right by there to go ahead and have a community bulletin board. Two were for a study of the derelict buildings. One was for benches, garbage receptacles and planters. That one also got another grant for exactly the same thing, which was covered under the urban renewal area grants also, the larger ones. One was for ADA compliant bathrooms and two were for marketing materials. So moving forward to the next one. So the clarifications that came out of this one from 2019 discussions were what is actually activities? That's the first one. So this year, the board voted to do mulch and emergency, and pay for an emergency radio. And there was some discussion at the board table, is in fact mulch under playground material an economic development activity? Okay, or what does activity mean? And the other one is this emergency radio, I believe the grant we ordered was for $2,000. That's why I put one radio there, because that's not even the cost of one radio. So what, what is, this would be the opportunity if we wanted to direct staff, thanks you guys for coming. This would be the opportunity for staff to follow our direction if we want to make the change of what is an activity, is mulch, you know, and then I put there in general, these are just my thoughts. Is it permanent or is it a short term? Is it new or is it a repair, replacement or maintenance of something? And, and then the final one of, is it a used as a match for other county programs? And you remember that came up during the discussion. Steve Gass brought it up once, and then I kind of reiterated too, is when our money from the pro, per capita distribution turns around and gets used actually just as the match for then when they come in and have to do a match on another county program. So those were the issues that seemed to come up.
Is there anything illegal about that?
No, no. I just, you know, the match, the match, I believe in general in the past with the board has been related to making sure, and this is not my term, it is a more sports enthusiast term of seeing that they've got skin in the game.
Okay, but haven't communities used monies that we've invested in them as a match for state grants?
Correct. The difference is, is our money being used for our match. That's the difference. I'm just asking you if, if there's an issue with that or not. For some communities, it might be that what they get for their per capita for the year might be the only need they have related to economic development that year. And therefore, you know, it's their money and they can use it however they want for economic development. Steve, and as I said, Steve Gass is the one who originally brought it up, you know, on it. So I can, I have no personal opinion or problem with it, given that sometimes the community doesn't have another need for their economic development money. I'm just bringing it up because it was something that came up during the November meeting.
Supervisor Hennings, do you have a problem? Since we're talking about that one or any other thoughts about those?
In my opinion, it is a little bit unusual to use, if you were awarded county funding and you use that same funding for match funding. That is a little bit unusual. I don't know if Dustin or Leanne, if you've seen much of that in other areas. You know, I think of other grants that I have worked on that usually you don't necessarily use, you know, you can't use like federal money for a match for other federal money oftentimes. So that's, that's just where it kind of comes in here, whether it's, the legality's not necessarily the question. It's just kind of general processing that I've seen. And I saw Dustin kind of nod his head.
Yeah, I think that's generally correct. I'd have to look at specific programs that are available. I know that when I'm working with our communities on projects, say like, for instance, the one in Cambridge, where there are several different funding sources from every layer of government, that my reminder to them is to be very sensitive about how we do our budgeting and how we allocate, you know, for sources and uses, so that we don't have that problem pop up later on, where we're cognizant of the matching requirements. So, and it's for that very reason that certain state departments like the DNR, you know, offer a grant that could go to the same project that the Catalyst Grant goes to, and how we make sure that, that those are meeting their requirements, if the requirements do not match a state grant, a state grant, even though they're different departments. So, but certainly, you know, I mean, we wouldn't have projects happen if we're able to match across government agencies.
Right, right. Right, no, and I absolutely agree. You're matching across government agencies, that's totally different than when you're doing it right within your own entity and stuff. That would be just my only area that I would have some question on. And again, I'm not sure if other communities do it this way or not, or say, no, you can't, you know, use your local match as another local match, but the same, same funding source.
One thing I'll comment, up until about, it might only be two years ago, we, Story County really did not have a good, we're still building this, a good understanding of what the per captive, per capita funding was being used for. So whether or not that's been a history of, as a practice, I can't answer that.
So have, now, and I might have missed this, last year, did we get reports from everybody, every community on what they used that for?
Yes.
Did anybody say they used it as a match for other county funds?
I can't, I don't recall.
Okay.
It's been a while since I've looked at it.
Okay. And do you remind, mind the entities then every year? Will you remind them that they need to do that report?
Yes, they'll in, at the March meeting, they'll get the forms. And last year, actually last year might have been the first year getting the forms back from all the jurisdictions. So it might only be one year. And we did do some additions to the forms for some additional information.
And is that part of your terms of agreement?
It's all, it's been for a while.
I mean, to get those reports back, I'm assuming?
It's, yeah, it's in, it is one of the requirements that they had to fill the forms. Appointed representative, there's three forms that they have to fill out.
Okay.
So, and then the other part of that, as you recall, that discussion would have been that the board would like to actually see them too. We didn't see, the previous board didn't see them, but at least they came in.
And what we'll do, when we do the annual report in June, we'll attach those forms as well as part of the annual report, rather than just a summary.
When we made the decisions and we agreed and to do the, those two, to grant those two, we didn't have, and I think what I said at the time was, we didn't have, I mean, the applications we had did not exceed the money available. And my thought was, yeah, general community betterment activities is a pretty vague one, you know, but sometimes economic development can be pretty vague. What do you call economic development? My sense was that if we had, that those were lower on our list and if we had had more applications and we had more applications than funds, I certainly would have looked at those and probably said not to fund those, to fund something that was more, seemed more directly related, related to economic development. But in the overall sense, I don't think we're talking about a whole lot of money here. You know, I think the vast majority or the vast share of this money goes into the per capita. It's what, $16,500 that we're putting out to all those projects. So I'm, I'm comfortable, I, without having further definition, I'm not worried about it myself. Because I think we'll sort things out saying, well, this project seems more, more geared toward than another one. I think we could spend a lot of time doing a lot of definitions for an annual program, the $16,000.
I'm not sure, I guess my question would be the difference between just saying general community betterment and general community betterment activities. They're kind of the same, in my, in my opinion. And I did say that they needed, it was a broad topic, going back to that meeting. So absolutely agree with, agree with that. I also look at economic development also, in my opinion, part of it is to help kind of elevate better living standards. You know, does that help a community with some better living standards? Yes, at that particular time. I, I guess my, just my question would be, how are you defining activities? That's, that's the question I'm just, I'm clear of.
Well, one issue that's been discussed in the past, okay, has been, is this something that should be covered under their normal responsibilities? I mean, it's been worded that way, okay? And that's, I didn't put it up there like that way, but instead I thought, well, even that is what's a normal responsibility. If the code doesn't say, you will do this. So I put down there as a possibility of permanent versus short term as one of those. So general community betterment, let's say if we took out activities and instead said general community betterment that has a lifespan of five years or longer. So saying that once again, that this is somewhat permanent, but permanent doesn't have to be brick and mortar per se, but is this general community betterment that exceeds what they would normally be budgeting for in their budget and doesn't have more of a permanence to it. The mulch one, as you all know, because of the way I vote, it really bothers me. The emergency radios, I think is a, is an op, is something that they needed to have been at least partially planning for. Okay? been at least partially planning for, okay? So regardless of whether we had the money left over or not, um, I also look at those communities who have applied in the past, knowing that it's not been the board's, past board's intentions to fund something that should come out of their normal budget or to fund something that would not be considered as part of their responsibility. Uh, so that's, that's where, for the other communities, there's more than one community I heard afterwards who said, geez, I wish I'd known we could have put in for the emergency radios. Because we didn't receive applications from all the communities, right? They took a look at what, based on past standards, had been about whether they had something that they could use the money within the time period. So, and ditto the mulch. I mean, is, oh, you mean, we can go ahead and start buying our gardening supplies? Is one comment made to me. So from that standpoint, if we can help guide them, if we choose to help guide them into making a better, better visual about what would be, uh, we would consider funding? Or are we, or do we leave it like this and say, hey, everybody just shove in an application and see if it goes or not?
I thought our discussions from that, what was it, a couple of months ago, meeting was to have the group, because being in January, to take a look at that and kind of help define from, kind of from that group, to narrow that down a little bit. Because I did feel it was broad on there. And I don't want to get, you know, so limiting so that they, you're getting to a point where you're not applying for something. Um, I'm just wondering, since we kind of said we wanted that group to take a look, would we, um, that group to take a look and come back to us and say, this is kind of our suggestion? I, I guess I'm not, I don't want to sound wishy washy because I'm the one who said it was awfully broad in that particular meeting. So I, I, and I do think it is a little bit broader and I, if I recall from our meeting with them, part of it, they initially wanted it broad so it provided some flexibility. Um, I voted, you know, and I said it in favor of those because it was broad enough in there. I felt it met the current definition. So that's, it was kind of hard for me to say, gosh, no, I'm not going to support this when I felt it met the current, the current definition. So I get what you're trying to do to narrow that. Um, I'm just, when we kind of gave a directive for kind of the stakeholders to put some input and then I don't have the input from them. That's just my only, that's, that's my only thing on that, is I would like them to come back and say, okay, we've talked, we'd like, this is how we could narrow it and see if that kind of meets what we are looking at. That was just my, my initial thought on that.
Would you be willing to look at that then?
That, it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda already.
For the January meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot we were doing that.
It's part of the guidelines and bylaws discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Let's just leave it. Because then it could come back to us, because we could say, okay, this is still too broad.
Right.
Um, but at least then we had a chance, because we've given them the directive to give us some input.
Okay. Yeah, ultimately, the board of supervisors needs to, will need to re-adopt any revisions to bylaws and project guidelines.
Okay, all right, moving on. Uh, let's go on. Okay. Economic assistance for communities, I put all of these on kind of one page. But, so we have offered in the past, uh, technical assistance provided by the special projects manager and, um, or they could apply for a technical assistance grant of $3,000. And so at some times, Leanne, as the project, special projects manager, has gone out, she facilitated, what, comprehensive planning in Maxwell was an example?
And when Colo first started looking at development to the west, um, three or four years ago, whenever Brenda first started here, I was involved in those discussions too. Now, that is part of my area of expertise.
Now, how that's been handled in the past then is that the request has to come in writing and has to be voted on by the board of supervisors. And, um, that, I think, did the last request, Deb, we had a director of, a director of external operations, so that, did that one, last one flow through her? We haven't had one since I've been on the board, but I remember, but the actual requests come in. I think those requests you're talking about came in right as the board was changing from 16 to 17. But my point being the process of how it got to the board of supervisors.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding what you're.
Well, it might have gone first through Leanne's, oh, you weren't reporting to external operations and I'm just, then it comes directly to the board of supervisors. I'm just trying to acknowledge that there was a change in reporting patterns for the special projects manager during some period of time. So I was just trying to reference whether it did come directly to the board first or whether it went to external operations director. Back to then, never mind, they came directly to the board. So it's been voted on by the board, depending on what Leanne said her work was at the time. All right. Or they could ask to go outside and hire someone with a $3,000 grants, for, up to $3,000 for a grant.
Have you had any of those in the last year?
We've not.
Yes, we did.
Oh, we did, okay.
Are you talking about the technical assistance grants that are determined, the program determined annually by the board through the budgets?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we did last year.
Who, who was that?
I don't remember. Do you remember? Collins?
Perhaps?
In Cambridge and.
Uh, yeah, I can't remember who it was.
Well, I think we only had three of them, three or four of them. It was a smaller number this year.
Smaller, okay.
I don't, I have it in my information. But, um, every year through the budgeting, works, after the budget, work sessions, work sessions are done, um, the board has an opportunity to discuss whether or not any additional general fund dollars remain that would be available then to, for the smaller communities if they're doing a capital improvements plan, if they're, they've hired someone in to do, maybe a, a study for an incubator in their community, just different, different opportunities that they required outside technical assistance. So a consultant come in, and the county will reimburse up to $3,000. It has to occur, so if we look at this current fiscal year, the project, if the board next January, February would, would decide to do the program again, um, the, a notice would go out to the communities, the communities would have then by like the first week of June to file for reimbursement. They submit whatever study they had done as well. And then the study though could have actually started, it began this fiscal year. So July 1st of 2019, it's a fiscal year basis and it ends at the end. So if they miss that cutoff deadline or if the project continues into fiscal year, next fiscal year, it would not be eligible.
So it's a reimbursement, it's not a front end? So we look at the study and say, yeah, that was a good study, we're willing to?
Pretty much everything has received reimbursement.
I don't think you look at the study, I think you just say.
They have to submit it.
They have to submit saying, we paid this amount of money, so would you?
And this would be done after we have all the other budgeting done, because it's if we had any money left, general funds, is what I was understanding.
And so there's a resolution that gets adopted by the board.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, it's just a conversation. I receive direction from the board, bring it forward, and then you have a discussion then, reach out to communities as appropriate.
So when you say last year, you meant 2018 or for this fiscal year, 2019 end?
Well, yeah, so this calendar year, so yes.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
You have not taken action on this current fiscal year's program.
Right, okay. So then, of course, then we get into technical, this is what we contract Dustin for, okay? And then the workforce development at 40,000, that, that we're paying for Brenda Dryer and her teams to help with workforce development here. So, uh, next slide, okay? And once again, to think about, do we want to do additions, deletions, changes, edits, okay, about that particular group of really technical assistance and program management moving forward? I will let you know that I did turn in to Lisa Markley just some numbers on an increase related to the AEDC contract for Dustin, for us to discuss, okay, at budget time. Based upon that, that the AEDC, it turned out, paid for about, according to their accounting, paid for several thousand dollars of expenses that would have been billed to our program had we had enough money in, for the AEDC. Instead, they just absorbed it in general. So, so, okay. And let's go on to the next category. Okay. So then we get to the urban renewal areas. So the policy we have right now is only 50% of, um, the amount that's available, do we pull to place under TIF if we choose to do that? We have no money to private and/or for-profit entities right now. It's all going to public, to public entities. And these are eligible projects right now. And we just added housing development rehabilitation and/or conversion this year. Now, I gave the whole list of everyone right off of what, what we had. This is the summary here, all right? Sorry, I realized the summary did not get in, so. But I broke out transportation infrastructure enhancement, one new project through all of that list of what has come under TIF, for what I termed upgrades and for what I termed infrastructure maintenance. I had nine under public land and trail improvement and I'll make a note here. And also, this is, this was, because there were some projects that actually came before us in phases and were issued, TIF was issued in phases. So if, the, the number here of total will not add up to the actual, if you count the list in the next four, like six slides that listed every project, because some of them were multi, one project, multi-funding, TIF multi-issued. So, um, then there was one communication and utility infrastructure expansion. There were 11 Main Street downtown revitalizations, um, a couple of them might have been, um, yeah, okay, but I think we had a broad about revitalization. But anyway, there were none for the housing this year and one I put under other. And we did that, the other, this year, and that's the Story County Carousel, because actually the carousel is owned by a foundation, not by the city of Story City. Okay? So, um, so we did actually turn money over to a private entity on that one. Next, then we can go through the next, I think, five or six slides, because those are the, the lists of all of them.
You want me to just forward through?
Yeah, please, just forward through. Yeah. I just cut and pasted. Okay. So, do we want to consider adding, removing, editing, any of those categories related to TIF? At least at this particular point in time?
I don't at this particular point in time. I don't have any suggestions of changes at this particular time.
Um, the, the one, the only one that gave me pause, and we talked about this at the board table again, was the retention pond. We had our ask, in the ask for this year, a discussion, there is a retention pond, in fact, part of their responsibility under their budget to go ahead. Is it, is a retention pond with Collins? And then there would have been a retention pond in Kelly if the landowner had agreed to sign over the land to Kelly. But the landowner, if you recall, wanted to keep the, the land private, so we don't give money for that then. So, um, so that's one thing that just kind of caused me, gave me cause. Is that in fact an enhancement or is it really just basic, you've got water you need to control? Okay? Then the, um, so, yeah, and, uh, do, at what point do you consider that an enhanced, an enhancement versus a maintenance or a part of your regular duty? So. Okay? I think we're done with, aren't we done with all those slides? No? Except for, oh, no, that's right, the four special requests, how could I forget that? Okay. So, Lisa, before you came on the board, we, this year, we received a request, I had 29,000, it was 27,000 when I went back and looked after I'd done this, 27, to pay for infrastructure with the EB expansion. And that was part of the Story Cities amount that they needed to do for their DOT RISE grant?
It is DOT, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the city of Nevada asked for $60,000 reimbursement, if you will, at this point, to help them with their match for the RISE grant. And, um, one of the things Supervisor Merkin dealt with this, so she's, one of the conversations with them, was our understanding that they didn't need the money, but it was in part a reaction to the fact that ended up about to go with the Healthy Life Center. So if Ames can get money, why can't we? So, and this amount of the money would have come from the part of, well, it would have been the 50% that we do not put under TIF. It would have been cash, the tax revenues.
The county's portion.
The county's portion. So instead of it being like, I'm looking at Lisa Markley, we TIF about, we can, if we gather it for TIF, the revenue's about 900,000 roughly, right? Okay? But if we're taking it as general tax dollars, it's about, what, 400,000 or is it a little less? Because all we're giving is the county portion, because the schools getting theirs, et cetera.
Right, yeah, it's around 300 and some thousand.
300 and some thousand, okay, thank you. So the funding would have come out of that particular amount of it also.
Which is listed as assigned funds.
Yeah.
In your.
Assigned, assigned.
Listed as assigned funds, yes, in your budgets.
Now, I will re, tell you about a conversation I had with the Miracle League from someone involved with economic development who, when I said, geez, we've got several things we think we may get asked for or we're going to need related to that fund, and the comment back to me was passionate, eloquently said to me, what do you mean? That's our money. So, um, I know that this person was just, you know, thinking that because it's assigned, all right, or that, we always say, one third of that's going to go to economic development. That's based on the philosophy that of that 50%, one third goes to growth, one third goes to economic development, one third goes to whatever. That's, when we were having that discussion, Lynda coined that term, kind of whatever. So Lisa, if you'd like to comment further.
The way it actually works is small community funding gets a third.
Okay, small community.
As opposed, you're referring to as that $90, I think you're referring to the same thing.
Correct.
Small, small community funding. So, so when the AEDC contract gets paid every quarter, um, we, we take, I take some out of the, or the assigned dollars toward that contract. The other third is actually for CIP, capital improvement, long-term, no, not long-term, things coming down that we, we know we're going to have to, to fund. So some dollars go into that pot of money in the assigned also, so.
Thank you.
So one third of the 50, other remaining 50, the rest is small communities, one third to capital improvements and the one third is?
Back into the general county use, shall I say, growth, whatever you want to call it.
But it doesn't get put in other budgets, it's just sitting there, okay?
Well, no specifically, no. What it gets done is just part of, part of the overall budget process then.
Through all the general fund.
So it's not sitting there for whatever?
Right, right. It's not in the assigned dollars anywhere.
Okay.
And it's only the, the third, a third, a third, which is a lot of hand calculation on the side. The third, a third, a third is actually of the general, the general, the general supplemental and the rural levies is all we're, I'm calculating. So when I say 300 and some thousand, because it's only the, those levies that I'm using, not the mental health, the debt service, all the other levies, any of the other levies we have. That make sense?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Not as much.
So may I say this again, there isn't just a pot of money sitting there that we can, if we had a special request, just to pull money out of.
In the assigned funds, the small community funding, for example.
The small community funding.
There's, um, I want to say, they'll quote me on this, it's like 100 and 200,000 dollars that is sitting there that has not been distributed out into a budget anywhere.
Okay.
Which, when we're putting together the budget, we can say, well, you know, we've got this assigned dollars sitting there, we can use some of those dollars for this or this or this. or this, or this.
I, sorry, Lucy Martin, story county auditor, just, just a reminder that TIF dollars don't just accrue, and then you find a reason to use them. You have to certify debt to actually get the funding at all. So, it always, that always comes before. It's not a sack of cash waiting to be spent. It is tied to specific projects, and you only ask for the amount of money that you need for those projects.
And so, the, the, unassigned funds that are sitting in, or, excuse me, the assigned funds that are sitting out there right now are from the beginning of time, when we started the tipping to properties. And as opposed to that whole 50% that we weren't levying against, or we weren't certifying debt against, that, that, those dollars do go into the assigned funds. They don't have to continue to do that. That was a board decision at that point in time to say, you know what, we're going to take 50%. We're not going to take the other 50%. But as opposed to it just going out into never, never land, and collecting and getting it put into the funds, let's, let's set it aside for a purpose and assignment.
So, when we discussed the housing need study earlier, Lisa, when you came to us and said, well, there's 250,000, that's the money she was talking about?
Right.
Yeah. But it's not money that Lucy's talking about.
No.
I was giving an overall, yeah, TIF.
Lucy's doing an overall TIF reminder.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. But 50% is the, the 50 of the increment. The 50% is the money that's TIF money. The other 50% that we don't take, and the part of that that's county property taxes, that, that's this other money we're talking about. And it's not, it's, we don't have to decide ahead of time what we're spending that on.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, and of that 250 pot you've accumulated or your bag, all right, that is one-third of the non-TIF, correct? It's one-third. We've just piled it up. There haven't been a lot of requests for it. So, when I say about, as we go to the next slide here, then when we, oops, oh, thank you, Lisa, yes, because when we talked about, like, the Miracle League, League One, and that comment was made, that is where the expectation that this person who made the comment to me from, is expected it probably to come out of that 250,000 dollar bag. So, okay. And, and then the last special request that we dealt with was the Healthy Life Center, which would have been revenue that would not have been TIF, but we are done with our, our 2002 is when we retire all of our TIF debt, correct, Lisa? We start retiring TIF debt in 2002? 22. I'm so sorry. Yes, I missed a two there. So, we start retiring TIF debt in 22?
The Dickens Lake debt retires in 2020.
Okay. So, then that's what would have converted to the tax revenue side that was being used in calculations for Healthy Life Center, correct?
You would have certified debt for the Healthy Life Center.
You would have added it to a run.
We would have added, all right. Okay, thank you. Then it would have been under TIF then?
Correct.
I think you. Okay. So, any additions, deletion, edits, or thoughts, I guess I should have put up here, about what you want to do about handling those special requests that come in in the future? They've been handled one at a time. They've been special requests. So, anything that you want to do related, related to, whether you want to put limits on it, expectations about whether it's needed or not?
I don't know that I'd want to put limits on it. I, I think it's kind of hard, because it's a special requ, I mean, it's, it's not, it's a generally more of a one-time consideration, something that's kind of unique that's going on within the, within the county. So, I'd hate to, I mean, you hate to kind of limit that, because you don't know, because of the particular project coming forward, what that might entail. So, that would just be my one comment there. I think it was a good conversation for just better clarity for all three of us on the funding streams available.
My answer would be that if we started putting limits on it, it would no longer be special requests. It would be just another program. And then we'd have another special requests thing here anyway, because we're not going to, we're not going to be able to anticipate and create a program for everything that people would ask us to do. I think we have to be very careful with it, though.
Right.
Because we don't want to, you know, I, I, it's the difficult decisions we have, because we don't have criteria set out. So, we say, somebody's come and asked us for blank. Is this a good thing? We have to kind of create our criteria out of whole cloth, so to speak, as we're doing it, and it's a challenge. But I think that the reality is, things are going to come up, that the county will say, yes, we could participate in that, should we participate in that, can we participate in that? And those take more time. And I think that's just the nature of the beast, that they're going to, it's going to be that way. I, I wouldn't want to personally start, you know, doing a lot of it, approving a lot of special requests, because that's how a budget can get out of control. And we would be asking, you know, do we have funds to do this or that? And I think that's the biggest question, because you go into a fiscal year with a budget plan in front of you, that you can really shoot holes in really quickly. And that's, that's the concern. I would, I would just say for the board, that we need to be very careful on special requests. And so, that's my.
So, thank you. I just felt it was important for us to have this discussion prior to. So, thank you for the time. Thank you for the additional input and the corrections and clarifications. And hopefully, then, if people listen to the audio or watch as they're interested, will have a better idea about kind of what exactly is going on with this particular board as we head into the next year. Thank you, too.
There is one other program I just want to quickly mention, and it ties into our workforce development and partnership with AEDC, and that's our Homebase Iowa program, our Welcome Home to Story County. It's a relocation assistance program to $2,500 for individuals that have served our nation and are coming to Story County for employment purposes. We budget annually, the board budget annually, annually $10,000. And Lisa, I think, are we there for this fiscal year?
A little bit, yes.
Yeah. I think it's like 12, 11, 12 something. It is really gaining momentum. So, that you'll see some.
Yeah, the amount we budget has been a placeholder, because we want to make sure that we have, we have funds in there in case. So, the fact that you went over this year, okay. Last year you didn't, so.
Yeah. And a couple of years, we didn't use anything.
Right.
But that's been.
It's not its own pot of money either. It's part of the budget being funded.
But that's been an important, important program that we're really starting, like I said, starting to see some interest in.
Thanks for all your work on that. Okay. And thank you for everybody here for helping us go through this and understand. Anything else from the auditor's office? Let me ask. Do you have any other comments? Nope. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to talk to you. That's my comment.
Me, too.
Okay, thanks. Next, we have consideration, and thank you, Lawrence, for putting that work together. Appreciate that. Consideration of cooperative agreement between Story County Conservation and Prairie Rivers of Iowa. Mike and Penny, welcome.
Hello.
Good morning. So, a number of years ago, we were fortunate that, very thankful that the board at that point, at that time, saw a need to really get a better handle on the water quality in the county. And was the first mayor in the county to, or in the state, I should say, to actually conduct a water quality assessment countywide. And so, that was done. This board was subsequently approved in that plan, and approved the implementation plan as a subset of that. And one of the items in the implementation plan is to conduct water quality monitoring. There was a time when there was a statewide program to do that, statewide citizen science project called Eye Water, and they conducted water quality monitoring. As any citizen that was interested could go to a training, and then we issued a kit, if you will, and they conducted monitoring. That program's been disbanded. And we saw, the last several years, we've been meeting with the City of Ames and Prairie Rivers on water quality monitoring efforts. And we saw a need to reinvigorate that, if you will, on a local level, as a means to get more water quality awareness out there, get more engagement with citizens in water quality. But also, we saw that that wasn't, that wasn't everything that was needed. And we need to do some more lab work, some more kind of targeted, more definitive analysis than some of the analysis that's come through the volunteer program. And so, the monitoring plan, if you will, that this contract calls for will address a number of things, including the volunteer component, but also the more, if you will, more scientific lab work for certain areas that are identified. And so, Conservation Board is unanimously supporting moving forward with this contract with Prairie Rivers to conduct this, if you will, to be the clearinghouse on the project and move the plan forward. And you'll see that it's a very broad-based collaborative effort. I'll let Penny speak to the supporters that she's brought on board already. But it's an effort that I think the county is, is situated position to augment that effort well, and that we would coordinate the volunteer component of it. And, and so, it's called for in the implementation plan as a high priority. And we'd like to ask for your approval to move it forward with this contract. And I will say before I hand it over to Penny here, this is $24,000 contract on a reversible basis. We do have money in the countywide budget for this FY. There's money that was budgeted, that was in this budget, that exceeds this amount. And all in, all in all, we've got $87,000 in the budget for water quality efforts, if you will. None of that's been spent to date for different types of efforts. And this would be out of a smaller portion of that, 50,000, that we kind of set aside for monitoring and outreach.
I get confused sometimes with "we" and "countywide" when I'm dealing with conservation, because you have your own budget, and then there's "our" countywide budget. So, help me out about, about, you say, this is coming out of conservation's countywide money. No, this is county, coming out of county.
No, it's countywide.
All right.
We took it out of conservation budget at the, I think you'd asked last year for watershed coordinator. We said we were just starting the watershed assessment work group. We didn't know what directions we were going. It was taken, 75,000 was taken out of conservation and put in countywide for water quality efforts. And that was in addition to another 12,500 that I think had something to do with.
Outreach efforts, various different outreach efforts in the implementation plan.
But there is money available in countywide for water quality. And I checked it with Lisa. And you, you checked it in your budget.
So, did that, Penny, you want to talk a little bit about the?
Sure. This is another example.
Can you state your name?
Oh, sure. I'm Penny Brown Huber. I'm the executive director at Prairie Rivers of Iowa.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm sorry, I have a really bad cold. I'm hearing all kinds of echoes in my head. So, this is another example that Story County is leading the state in trying to understand this very, you know, challenging water quality problem we have. I think in the county, we've done incredible amount of work so far. This piece of doing water monitoring is very critical to helping people understand the scope of the problem. And so, this project, you know, is to complete this 10-year project. But then also, there are over 30 monitors in the state right now, collecting water monitoring data that do not communicate with each other. And, and we don't collect it in any way that can make sense to any of us. They don't all talk the same language. That's one of the things we're going to have to work on, is how are we going to collect data so that, that the data is able to be understood? And then, part of our goal is to engage all the communities in the county and bring them to the table to help, you know, develop right this 10-year plan, so that we're all understanding what needs to happen. With that, you know, when you're doing all this work, there's lots of education that goes with it, because it's very challenging for folks to understand water quality and all the nuances of it. So, we'll be doing a lot of educating. And the, just an example of, we have a huge commitment, Story County Conservation, obviously, has been tremendous partner for us, and I really thank them for everything they're doing in this area. We did a snapshot in October, and 28 people came out to learn how to do water monitoring in the stream. That is huge. That's a huge number. It may not seem like a lot, but it's huge. And our goal over this next year is that we would have 100 volunteer monitors trained to do water monitoring. That would be tremendous for the county. And if you just think about how things work, right, how you multiply, like, if, if those 100 people found one more, and then two more, and, so, we're really excited about the idea. I was looking at the, just the budget briefly, just an adjustment to that. I met with the City of Ames a couple weeks ago. And so, they've made a commitment of 15,000 cash beyond the other things that they're doing. So, they actually increased their commitment to this project. So, I think, I think you'll be, it's a tremendous, it'll become like an asset, is how I see the 10-year monitoring plan. It's going to be an asset to the county, and we're going to learn a lot about our streams, and the public's going to have a lot to think about. So, it'll be, it'll be exciting.
Other questions?
I just have a question on the, so I'm looking at the budget, so I'm looking at, looks like, the income.
Uh-huh.
And I'm just going off of what you just said. So, it had City of Ames at 5,133, if I'm reading that correctly. You said they're doing 15?
Yeah.
So, are some of the area, I mean, are the other areas confirmed with your funding? I'm just trying to figure out if, does that change funding requests? Are you doing more? I'm just seeking some clarification on that.
Yeah. So, there's actually Prairie Rivers right now, like, with the increased commitment from the City of Ames, that was able to reduce our 17,152. Is that right? My glasses on, yeah. And I'll be looking for other additional funding for this project, and not just for this year, but going forward as we look at partnering the Soil and Water Commissioners. They're supporting this effort. Alliance actually has written a small grant for us. Story County Community Foundation. So, I'll be, Leopold Center has come to the table with 10. That's a really big statewide partner. And I'm going to be, we have solicited one foundation. I'd really like to see a national foundation come to the table in Iowa for water quality money. So, we'll be looking for those things. But beyond this first year, once we have the. But beyond this first year, once we have the plan, then it's the work of staying after it, you know, tracking the, the monitoring, making sure your lab results are accurate so that the public can trust the data when they see it. And at Prairie Rivers, we believe that when people learn and understand, they make good decisions generally, and so that's what our purpose of this is. Can we help people understand, learn what's going on, and then we'll be able to make good decisions on how to clean our water, so.
So, let me ask you the question. Maybe I'm asking the same question.
Could be, because I don't think I've got mine clear on its own.
You presented a budget where there's a total expenses shown of 83,933.
Yeah.
You've shown an income of 83,933.
Right.
And I think you just told us that the City of Ames increased their cash by 10,000 from what's on this sheet. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Well, the income needed is 83. The current amount would include, this budget has been shifting, so. If you look at, let's see, when I, when we had originally done this, okay, I'm sorry, my head is really foggy, but.
Yeah, I understand.
Right. So, we had, I had done some different applications. It was leaving Prairie Rivers portion at 17,152. I've been able to reduce that amount. That's an important amount.
Where's that? It's up on the top under expenses.
If you look up under the expenses, I was trying to track who is paying for what piece, and so.
PRI.
The income amount right now, I'd have to have a calculator, but.
Okay.
Well, I. Go ahead, yeah.
Again, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, because your budget shows the total expense of 83,933.
Sure.
The total income you're getting or proposing is 83,933. I'm just wondering if you received an additional 10,000. I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, that then is an income of nine, you know, 93,933. I'm just trying to figure out, are you reducing something somewhere else? Are you increasing your expenses somewhere else? That's, that's what I'm just trying to figure out, because usually when you have a budget presented, if you get additional money, yeah, that's what I'm just, I just want to know, where does that additional 10,000 go?
Is Prairie Rivers 17,000, is that actually kind of like an in-kind or whatever? So, the 10,000 will go to cover part of that 17,000?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Lisa.
No, that's fine. I just wanted the clarification, and I appreciate, Loris, that you questioned whether it was an in-kind and stuff, because that would be, to me, that's just kind of nice to know if you've got some solid dollars coming in or what the in-kind is so that if it is shifting something, I just have a better picture.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything on the bottom is cash. The 83,933, 933 is.
Cat, well, that's true.
That's why it doesn't make, I, I think that's a confusing itemization you have over there. I don't understand how it fits in.
The Cornell Foundation was in here, and that would have been.
Yeah. So, the, there was a Cornell Foundation line in here for 17, and we got notification that it was declined, which is the actual number here needs to be reduced by 17,152. Go ahead. Mike's trying to say something.
If Loris had this right.
Okay.
To, I believe, just to have you confirm that, but, yeah, so Prairie Rivers had applied for, correct me if I'm wrong, Prairie Rivers had applied for another grant that would have been under income here for 17,000 that was not received. And so, then Prairie Rivers moved there, took that money on as an in-kind, as an in-kind contribution here, and then the additional 10,000 from Ames would reduce Prairie Rivers' in-kind from 17 down to 7,000.
Right.
Is that accurate?
I, I get that, but when I'm looking at the income at the bottom, I'm not seeing any reflection of the 17,000, and it's still adding up to 83,933. So, whether you were, had 17,000 or declined it, it is not reflected anywhere except for up above, and then the funding all matches up.
Yeah. I just don't think the, I think the foundation amount was removed, but not, the number was not reduced on the total, is what it amounted to.
So, you're saying your salary, your salary and fringe, you, and I don't know if this is what you're saying, but let me ask, did you reduce those to the amount that was available rather than the time you actually would be spending?
The time we're spending, I had, that is locked in. What I'm, what I, I guess I'm not quite sure what you're saying? Yeah. So, the, instead of 83,933 on this list, it should say 66,433 because we had the request from the Cornell Douglas Foundation on that originally, and it was denied. So, instead of 83,933, it should be 66,433.
Where is that listed here?
The Cornell Foundation.
Let me just ask, Stroy County Community Foundation, is the 6,000 confirmed?
Yeah.
Yes. And then, there's 24,000 from Stroy County. The Conservation, Stroy County Conservation match, Mike, that's out of your budget?
Correct.
And you're confirming that? The City of Ames lab match?
Confirmed.
Confirmed. The City of Ames cash is now 15,000 even?
Right.
And the match from the City of Ames?
Yeah, that's to do with some of the eco fair, and, yeah.
Okay, now, is, now, then I got the question. That's not in the expenses on the top, is it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's up here under events and the eco fair.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, I sense we're still having some trouble with.
So, then, the total equals right now 66,433.
For income?
Plus, the additional money to Ames would bring us to 76,300.
Gotcha. It's, what they do is under income there. That amount does not add up to 83,933. It only adds up to 66,433.
Right.
Good.
That's the.
That's the part.
Yeah, that's what I've been re-adding here. That's, that's the issue.
Thank you for finding that, because we weren't getting that up.
Okay.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah.
Fine.
So, when we, yeah, I would say future-wise, if something's put together as to show what the actual income you got there and then what you're still needing, would just, okay, that would have just been helpful to, yeah, figure that out.
Glad you found that. I was not seeing it. Okay, we got it. We've got it. Okay, are there any other, then, then I think we have some understanding of why we weren't seeing, okay. Any other questions about the project?
Or the, or the money?
Okay. Or the money?
Yeah, I do have a couple, please?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the first thing, coming back here, the term, the 24,000 Conservation match. Now, we're being asked for 24,000 out of our general fund. Is there another 24?
It's the same.
Thank you. So, there's not 24 plus 24. Okay, that's my, all right, thank you. Here's my second question. This is a 10-year program, so you presented us one year's budget, correct? Okay. So, the 24,000 is out of our fiscal year '20. So, basically, assuming everything's very evenly parsed throughout the year, that we will move 12,000 of that as a carryover then? Is that what, Mike, what you're planning on? 24,000 divided by two is 12,000 carryover, correct?
Some of it may carry over, correct?
So, all right, now, that's why I'm back to, if we have a, this is not a fiscal year budget, is it Penny? This is a calendar year budget, correct?
The project is for the calendar year.
The contract is written ending December 2020. I just checked that.
Yeah.
So, it's, it will span two calendar or two fiscal years, and I noticed the same thing.
Okay. And why I'm asking then, all right, is because when we head into fiscal year '21 budgeting, we will be carrying over, it looks like, money from '20 into '21. But are we, in fact, then anticipating, at least from the program 10-year standpoint, that Stroy County is coming in with $24,000 for the next 10 fiscal years? So, are you following me? I know the contract says it expires December of 2020, but it's a 10-year program. So, to keep this program going forward and fully funded, we'd be looking at at least $24,000 a year from the county for the next 10 years. Is that, in fact, what's in the back of everybody's mind?
I think that every year, there will be a decision point for whether or not the county wants to continue. But yes, I think from the standpoint of Prairie Rivers, and I don't want to speak for Penny here, but Prairie Rivers is looking at this as a ongoing 10-year project with annual contributions from, from the contributors.
Have you, when you went to these other contributors, Penny, did part of the conversation focus, or was it everyone fully aware that you'd be coming back for 10 years in a row for more money, whether they gave it or not or promised it, but that, that you would be coming back and need that money for the next 10 years?
I would say that the City of Ames would be anticipating that, but Stroy County Community Foundation, probably not. And the Leopold Center, probably not.
My, just my concern going for, you know, forward here then, is that whatever we fund in the first year is, is a lot of it, or part of it, at least, is setup costs, right? Starting costs. And so, therefore, we're funding something that is really structured around 10 years, but we don't know where the funding is coming from. That doesn't mean I'm going to vote against it, by the way. All right? I just want to acknowledge that way up front, that we're paying for a program that is, that you set up, that you, the monitoring, the entire tent is a 10-year program with only one year of funding guaranteed right now. So, so we'll be paying for the setup. I think it's an important program. Just want to make sure everybody's on the same wavelength.
Yeah, I, I would say, maybe I see it, maybe, maybe I draw the line and say in a slightly different location than Penny, but, you know, every year, you're going to have expenses with training because we're going to recruit new, we're going to continually recruit volunteers, and so, we're going to continually have training expenses. I think that Prairie Rivers will have some upfront costs on getting the data management time or the data management protocol set up. One of the benefits of this program is that's going to be minimized because a lot of that little entry is going to be done on the national database. It's already set up, and so, that's through the Isaac Walton League that we're using their database. So, I think that, yes, there will be some, some setup, some startup costs, but I don't know that it's going to be a real significant piece of that pie.
Okay.
I think a lot of it's going to just be ongoing costs. You know, supporters over the, at least how I would certainly envision it is, is every year, like I said, the county will have that decision on whether or not we want to re-up support, and I think that we'll have some reporting to back that up, to help make that decision, I should say. And at the same token, I think everyone, all of these supporters will be in the same situation, and I think that it's natural to see the supporters change over time, and I would anticipate that Prairie Rivers will continue to do more fundraising and hopefully additional supporters. And so, the formula or that piece of the pie, I don't, you know, is going to, is going to change over time, too, I would anticipate, anyway.
If I was, think there would be, I would think that with the coordinator's time, with Dan's time, there may be a place where that's more front-ended in getting everything set up. And I also look at this budget, and I see that it's really the, the contributions that are looked at as probably being one-time are the relatively smaller ones. And I know Penny will continue to look for money to, to backfill those potentially rather than just say, oh, I think I can go to the county and the city and they'll take that over. Penny knows better than I do about this.
More, but more partners, too, are better.
And, and throughout government, people go into 10-year projects with one-year funding. I mean, nobody gets a guarantee in government that I, that you have the funding for 10 years. So, and we have a 30-day termination clause in this as well, as it being a 12-year contract. And for one, I mean, why would we, why would anybody do, continue to do a program if it wasn't working, just because we said we'd do the program for 10 years? I think annually, we're going to be looking at a program like this and say, has, is this delivering what we expected it would? Is it a worthwhile project? And I think Prairie Rivers would be looking at it as well as everybody who's funding it. Are we doing what we set out to do? So, I don't have any reservations in terms of that. I think everybody's going into it with their eyes wide open.
I have very high respect for both Prairie Rivers and Penny, so that, I just want you to know that. That's not the issue. I just want to make sure everybody knew, you know, so.
Yeah, and I think this is ambitious program that you're doing. I think it's addressed some of my concerns. One, just the funding, I've got that wrapped in my head now. Two, that's been brought up by both of my colleagues, of it being a 10-year program and are we tied in, too, for the next 10 years? And so, I kind of reread and reread the contract here. You know, I do see the agreement calls for the 24,000 specifically says included in fiscal year '20. You know, didn't leave that kind of vague, so you weren't thinking, okay, we're kind of inadvertently have committed. Not saying that I wouldn't commit further. It's kind of hard to commit for a future budget when you haven't even had any budgetary discussions on that and stuff. So, thank you for bringing this forward.
One of the, and, you know, I go both without saying, but one of the things, you know, when we, Conservation started looking at this, water quality, you guys know this, huh? But water quality is not just, it doesn't stop at any jurisdictional lines. And so, to see that, that this project has recognition and financial support from the City of Ames and so many others, that's significant. And so, I commend Penny in getting that to happen. I think it's a tremendous project.
Thanks. I will make a motion if we're good?
Yes, go ahead and make a motion.
I move that we approve the agreement with Prairie Rivers for $24,000 to carry us through December 31, 2020, out of the fiscal year '20 budget.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Olson?
Hi.
Edens?
Hi.
Merkin?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to apologize to you that if I'd realized how long we were going to take on the economic development discussion, I would have reordered the agenda, and I, you know, hopefully, it somewhat was interesting to you.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Department reports, there are none. Other reports, there are none. Before we go to upcoming agenda items, I want to make another apology. About an hour ago, I looked at this agenda, and I realized that renaming Squaw Creek was not on it.
Right, yeah.
And I didn't notice it until now. I guess I made some kind of a comment last, at the end of the last meeting. We revisit again next week, but I evidently didn't do my due diligence and make sure I got on the agenda, so I apologize. I know that the City of Ames is looking at it. I know that the City of Ames is looking at it tonight, because I got an email from, or a text from mayor wanting to know what we were doing. We can't deal with it now, because it's not on the agenda. I will be leaving Sunday, so I won't be here till, for next week's meeting. I won't be here until until our organizational meeting. I thought about whether or not we could get a special meeting later in the week. My schedule doesn't look very good. I don't know what anybody else's looks like.
I'm not this week.
If we can't do it. So I'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Okay, and then just the two of us. Can you call in by any, will you be somewhere you can call in?
No, it would not be economically feasible.
Oh, okay.
If I can put it that way.
That's right.
And it would also be unreliable.
So it's either we put on for next week or we put it on the organizational.
We could put it on the organizational. We could simply tell them that we don't have anything. I'd, I would like to be here. The organizational meeting is usually a big meeting, but I would like to be here for it. It is my mission, for which I really feel bad.
Right. I think you and Lisa have been the two spearheads of it, so to put it on next week's meeting leaves a very, an important voice, okay, with, not only just as one of the three of us, but also as someone who's had a lot of conversations on it and been a lot of contact on it. I don't think that it's, the rivers go, or the creek is going anywhere, okay? And unless Ames was really depending upon us to do something. I mean, they do have the, kind of the choice of the names. So one option they could even deal with is say, you know, we'll pick those or whatever. So I say that let's do it either the organizational or we do it the next Tuesday after the organizational. You know, that might, that might make it a little less crowded. And let's, why don't we do it Tuesday, the, what date is that?
It'd be the seventh.
Seven?
It'd be the ninth. The organizational's the second.
Second.
So it would be the ninth.
No. No, because what I, well, the organizational's about a Thursday.
Tuesday.
Thursday.
Right.
So add.
Maybe Tuesday, the seventh.
Hi, ma'am, here, okay?
I will, I will, as soon as we get, I will make sure that I get it on one agenda or the other expenses.
Okay.
Okay. Any other upcoming agenda items then?
Not off the bat, no.
Okay. Then we'll go to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda. The board may not take action. Is there anybody from the public who would like to comment? Open the public forum. Seeing nobody moves the microphone, I'll close public forum number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. We can just do this quickly. Couple of questions.
Yep, first, I guess I would like to say is yesterday, yesterday we had our first children's advisory mental health meeting. It was purely, that one was more just organizational. We did talk a little bit about kind of what the code has to say, some direction. Gave time for the large group of folks sitting around the table to have some discussion just about currently the children's lack thereof of mental health system. Predominantly, the conversations circulated around um schools and the need for support in the schools, et cetera. So we're in the process of setting up our next uh meeting date that will have more specifics that we'll be working on. But we did have that yesterday. Agenda-wise, have the library meeting this afternoon. If I had time, I was gonna go to a grand opening over in Slater, but I don't know that I will have time to go across there. And I did let them know that. And I believe we have a intergovernmental roundtable this evening. And then tomorrow, I have a morning meeting in Ames and we have the holiday lunch on Wednesday. And then the mission statement in the afternoon. I may go to the Hannes Mills Low Head Dam meeting Wednesday evening. Thursday, it looks like we have the capital improvement plan. And then I have an appointment in the afternoon. And then Friday, I will be up in Eldora. They adjusted the Central Iowa juvenile detention meeting because of the holiday. Have that, and then I know we have a department recognition Friday afternoon.
You do?
Yeah. Yes, we do.
Can't remember which department it is.
Facilities, two.
The facilities, yeah.
Okay, we do. Laura, what do you got?
Okay, so uh A D C, Joshua, I'm gonna drop in on that for a little bit. It's over at Story Medical tomorrow. Then ditto on the, what Lisa has talked about. I'm glad to hear you're going to Hannums Mills or maybe, you know, somebody else's. I am gonna go to the district supervisor, District One Supervisor meeting in Boone. Okay, so one of the three of us are there. And I didn't see it on either one of you.
I didn't see it.
Okay, well, it's a, it's at the same time as the Hannums Mills.
Did you get an email on that?
Uh, ISAC sent it out, yeah. Sorry, well, if you'd like to go instead of that, we can work it out later. Who's going where for what?
Oh, no, I'm fine doing the other. I just.
All right, okay, all right. I'm gonna go eat pizza with with the gang again. All right, so then the A D C executive meeting. And if I make it to the A D C chamber annual meeting, it's at lunch, it's at Sioux Cup. And for me, that makes sometimes parking far off a difficulty. So it'll be, if we get out of C I P in time and if I can find some parking space, that is at nine miles away. Okay? So those are my meetings for the week. I have one update. I told you last week, was going to the Herta Board meeting on Thursday, and we had a pretty serious issue to deal with, which is that we are receiving no money for Dallas, no supplemental or subsidy money from Dallas County for providing services in the county. The Dallas County Supervisor was there. We had, so we had five of us there. We had one, so one supervisor on the phone. We were only missing one of the seven supervisors that make up that board. Dallas County will not provide any money for us for the rest of, for the rest of fiscal year twenty. Nor, okay. They have said that even though the agency closed, that they've given their money to so far, that that agency also provided congregant meals in the, in Dallas County. It's had to switch over to Madison County and the cost then has gone up to get those meals to, from Madison into Dallas County, and all the money's gone. So so far, it looks like the Story County taxpayers will be asked as part of the group at, when we get further down the road, to possibly have suffered either eight thousand dollars worth of service we didn't provide here in the county or eight thousand dollars cash. And that's the best way I can describe it right now, because we are keeping very close watch, just in general, on the herd of monies. And what's in every week and what's off, out every week. So the estimate is we've lost about, so far, on Dallas County, it, we're forty thousand dollars in the, I'm gonna say arrears, we're not in the arrears on anything. We, the Herta Board, aren't. But what is it been as far as the cost of, to provide services to Dallas County? So far, for the first uh five months since the first of the year, has been about forty thousand dollars, okay? We knew when we took over services from this agency that was not fiscally sustainable. We knew that there was always some startup clo- cost that Herta has to absorb. We had to absorb it when we took over Madison. We had to absorb it, absorb it when Hartland Senior Services here in Story County gave it up to Herta. And that's been seven or eight years ago. But right now, that's where we are. We had the, they, we, our executive director of Herta had asked to go talk to the Dallas County Board of Supervisors and was declined. They said, don't come and see us until January, when we're discussing fiscal year twenty-one budget. It has been expressed to the Dallas County Supervisor, who was there, that if we're going to go on and continue to give service in Dallas County, and I'll come back to that in a minute, that we certainly expect that the funding that's approved in fiscal year twenty-one not only cover what the anticipated costs will be, but that we also would like to see a goodwill gesture of making up some of that money with their fiscal year twenty-one budget as a donation or whatever. But we will, we can't continue like this. We did decide, given that we were headed during December and January, that's a really terrible time to stop public service transportation. You've got the holidays, not very friendly or holiday at all. But then in January is a terrible month to tell people, sorry, you've lost your ride to the hospital, you know, et cetera. I mean, you know, the weather and everything else. So we have decided, some services slowed down in general. I understand in Dallas County during the holidays and right after, but we want to make sure we maintain those basic services for those, those people who are solely reliant on transportation, most likely disabled elderly right now. So our board will, after January and having to go, at least our executive director, to go talk to the Dallas County Board of Supervisors, we will be having that discussion again. I'm sorry I can't bring good news back, and I'm sorry that um we're in this situation. We, the agency, Herta, had no choice but to pull the services back. Not only was there a question about whether there was fiscal viability for the funding agency to go, or the eight, the subcontractor to go forward, but because that sub, because subcontractors in general, over the last couple of years, have had some um large accidents with the buses. Fortunately, nobody harmed seriously, but banged up and et cetera. Our insurance premium at Herta last year went up significantly, because we carry the insurance on the buses. And part of the issue in the insurer not wanting to bring that insurance payment down was they are subcontractors and their drivers aren't our employees. So we have no real control legally over their training. We, per legal, it's a legal type of of tracking of who's doing the training, who's responsible, and the insurance went up exorbitantly. And so we needed to terminate that contract. Ditto with the Madison one, which was the last one done. So that is my, that is my feedback to you about that meeting. There, all of the supervisors, with the exception of the Dallas County one, or at least the five that were there or on the phone that day, we were very adamant that um, that you cannot have an agency with seven counties involved and only six of them are helping cover the deficit in the bills. And that's what it is. We're still getting credit for the rides, you know, from the state and the federal governments. We're still getting credit for the mileage formula. But the formulas don't necessarily go up from year to year funding in the whole state. It's just that all of the various public transits vie for position based upon how many miles they've done and how many, how many riders they've had. So, but we have, we just made the decision that to just cut those riders off was not the most practical or efficient thing to do, given we know kind of where we are.
It's gotta be a time when there's an end to it.
That is correct. That is, I'm telling you that the January.
January's not a good time, I agree, but there does need to be a time.
Correct, that is correct.
When Dallas County doesn't put its fair share here. I mean, they're responsible for their.
Correct, that is correct. That is why we only said January. January gets our executive director in front of their board of supervisors. I mean, we're requesting for the, I think, the first meeting after the organizational meeting, all right? That gives us opportunity then to like, also take a look at what happened in December from the monetary standpoint, to take a look what what would happen if we do cut them off.
So that, I'll tell you what, Laura, I have another, I have some questions, but we're running out of time. Just in an informational mode, can I ask you some more about this later on? I just want to ask how, a little more detail on exactly how it happened that that money got gone.
Yes, yeah, I believe that would be acceptable.
Okay, let's do that.
No discussion or decisions, just to answer some questions.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
All of those same meetings, I think, most of them are on my calendar. There's also at four o'clock today, a septic ordinance meeting.
Yes, that's right. Yeah.
I'm gonna try to to um attend that. And I will try to attend the Hannum Stam listening session. And Thursday, Prairie Rivers Board. Okay, see you then. And I have a second District Correctional Services Board Friday morning and then back here for facilities. So it's gonna be a busy week. And yeah, we don't have any time for any special meetings this week.
No, no.
Just a couple of things from last week. I did go to the Age Twenty Forty Plan meeting. There's a meeting December nineteenth, a special meeting, where they will evidently, the consultant will present final work on scenarios. And I think, and I won't be at that meeting, obviously, because I'll be gone, so I hope somebody can attend that. And then January, I think they will go on further. I think they'll get really into some real work on where do the, where does Ames propose to put the fifteen thousand people in between now and twenty forty? I'm honestly just, I noticed the other day, I think you may know that the Dakota Access Pipeline is asking the Iowa Utilities Board to double the flow-through on the pipeline. I did just see the other day that the Sierra Club filed a resistance. Dakota Access has asked them for a waiver now on something, even though the Utilities Board said, no, no, you do have to come to us. This is something that's within our purview. So I was gonna look and see what the Sierra Club wrote. I don't know if this board would wanna weigh in at all. They don't have a hearing set. I was waiting to see if they were setting a hearing, and I haven't seen anything yet about a hearing. But I can continue to follow it and maybe bring something. If it's not done by January, maybe bring something to the board early in January, if you wanna consider weighing in with the Utilities Board.
Please do.
We do have the Omen Pumping Station in Iowa. And that, the one down by Cambridge, and that's always been the concern, if the capacity were to be increased significantly, what that might, might do. And I've, I've not had time to follow it. I know there've been some objections um filed with I U B from some experts who say that's not a good thing, but I don't, I can't, I can't testify to it right now. So that's basically what I've got. So if there's nothing else for the good of the cause, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
To adjourn?
Second.
Okay, Edens?
Aye.
Olson, aye. Merkin, aye. We are adjourned, thank you. And again, apologies. On the agenda. 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 On the agenda.